Good morning Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. This morning, our invocation will be led by Reverend Luan Lewis, pastor of Mount Sinai Baptist Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Valerie Abbott. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and constituents of Birmingham. But they that wait on the Lord shall renew their strength. They shall mount up with wings as eagles. They shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not faint. Heavenly Father, Lord God, we come now in the mighty name of Jesus the Christ. Lord God, we lift your name up on high this day. We ask, oh God, that you come into this place like a mighty rushing wind. Have your way in this place, oh God. Change minds, council hearts, renew strength, oh God, that this, your people, oh God, shall come together in unity. The decisions that are made, oh God, will be, will be decisions that you lead and guide us to. Grant us liberty, oh God. Give us grace and mercy, oh God, as we go forth with this meeting, oh God. Father God, we bless you, we praise you, and it is in the magnificent name of the risen Savior, Jesus the Christ, that we do pray, and we all say amen.
Amen.
Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We hope.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Good morning, sir. Councilmember Smitherman. Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Council President Oakley.
Good morning. Council, the minutes are not ready for the April 1st, 2025 through July 29th, 2025 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning to you, good morning to the entire council. It's good to see you all, see you all this morning. It's good to see everybody in the chamber, as well as those tuned in online. Mr. President of council, I want to give you a recap and a reminder update, if you would, as it relates to some of the things I shared last week, including the launch of the Critical Repair Program. As you know, and a reminder, the city of Birmingham's Department of Community Development will soon open applications for its Critical Repair Program, where 100 eligible residents will receive up to $30,000 each in urgent home repairs, such as roofing, plumbing, and electrical needs, or electrical needs. Applications will be open for two days only, and that will be September 4th and September 5th. Interested applicants are invited to attend one of the upcoming information sessions that will outline the program requirements and give more detail. An in-person session will be held on Thursday, August 7th. It'll be from 5:30 to 6:30 PM at the Birmingham Crossplex. Then another in-person session will be held the following week, Thursday, the 14th, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM at Fountain Heights Recreation Center. Residents interested in applying for this program are strongly encouraged to attend one of the sessions. And applicants should not, again, we strongly suggest, you don't have to bring any documents to this session. These events are for informational purposes only. However, for those who can't make it, we want to encourage you to go to criticalrepair.com or call 205-581-3117. Again, go to criticalrepair.bham.com or call 205-581-3117 for more information. As a reminder, I also shared last week that the city is hosting a vendor expo. I wanted to give a breakdown of what that means, to when, to where, to what. The Department of Finance invites small business owners, entrepreneurs, service providers, and vendors of all sizes to attend the business with BHM Vendor Opportunity Expo. This is a free in-person event designed to help local businesses navigate and get access to procurement opportunities. The event will take place Thursday, August 7th, from 4 to 7 PM, and the location will be at the Bowel Auditorium. The whole notion and idea of this is to serve as a comprehensive guide for doing business with the city, the A to Z, 26 steps, nulls and bolts, if you would. And so whether you're a startup, a seasoned supplier, or a mom and pop operation, this expo will provide step-by-step guidance on Birmingham's bidding process. Attendees will meet directly with members of the city's purchasing team, learn how to become a certified vendor, receive help obtaining a business license, as well as discover a wealth of citywide resources to support their growth. Pre-registration is required. Again, this is not one of those events you can just walk in and show up. Pre-registration is required, required? So we encourage you to either do it at purchasing@birminghamal.gov. Again, that's purchasing@al.gov, or call 205-254-2265. Again, that phone number is 205-254-2265. Mr. President of council, this Wednesday, which is tomorrow, August 6th, there will be a blood drive at the Bowel Auditorium from 10 AM to 4 PM. Of course, this is one of the best causes in our community, and this is one we encourage our city employees, as well as you and your team members, to participate in. Donors get a $35 e-give card, plus the Red Cross will perform free A1C and sickle cell trait testing. We really encourage you to sign up before, so you can get a slot at times, so you're not just sitting there waiting. And you can go to redcrossblood.org using the keyword BHM. Again, that's redcrossblood.org and use the keyword BHM. Sign up for your slot to give blood. Trust me, it does save a life and it saves lives. So really, really want to encourage our team members to participate. As you know, I stood with the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mark Sullivan, as well as Lord Watson Jr. of the Penny Foundation last week. Through a public-private partnership, we made a public announcement about Ready for Day One, the 2.0 version of Everyday Counts, if you would, encouraging families, pushing families to make sure that their child is not only registered, but in class in school on the first day of school, which is two days away, August 7th. This initiative seeks to give $43,000. And the breakdown of that is through a random selection that the school system will drive, not the city of Birmingham and not the Penny Foundation. $500 for two families at each of our schools. The notion is very simple. Again, we want to incentivize attendance in Ready Day One. The effort aims to reduce chronic absenteeism, which one the superintendent shared last week. At the height of COVID, our chronic absenteeism was pretty high in our city. The good news is through several initiatives, and this is just an add-on initiative, chronic absenteeism has gotten down, but we want to get it all the way down to zero. And so how the incentive works to qualify students must be both registered and present on the first day of school. Students' names will be randomly drawn from Birmingham City Schools Student Information System. The incentive will be awarded to the primary guardian of the selected student. Only one incentive will be awarded per household, and that's it. No gimmicks, no games, it's actually pretty simple. We want to encourage our parents and families to go to birminghamal.gov, Ready Day One. But we really want to encourage them to go to Birmingham City Schools website. If your child's already in the school system, it's actually a very short process, less than 10 minutes. But if you need help and assistance in person, you can go now to the Lincoln Center. This Sunday, August 10th, a collective of visionary leaders called the Southern Futures Project will debut a new groundbreaking documentary called As Goes the South. This film will showcase the city's transformation and untapped potential. The film features a Birmingham led by a new generation of leaders working together to shift the narrative of a historic city, rarely honoring for its stunning beauty, as well as its legacy of civic pride, entrepreneurial grit, and pure vibrancy. The screening will take place at the A.H. Parker High School located at 400 Reverend Abraham Woods Jr. Boulevard. Doors will open at 2 PM. There will be food trucks available outside. The film screening will start at 3 PM. This is a free family event. Seats are limited, however. Registration is encouraged to confirm your seat. And you can go to eventbrite.com and search for As Goes the South to register. Again, eventbrite.com, and you can search As Goes the South to register. This time, I would like to ask Uche Bean, Councilwoman Crystal Smitherman, as well as Councilwoman Latonya Tate, who serves as Chair of the Public Safety Committee, if they would, come down to the podium. As they come down, I would like to ask the other guests to join me, which are all these young people you see up here in front. As they come forward, we want to take a moment to acknowledge and thank this council. I want to thank all nine of you. I pulled two of you down because you've been like the co-cheerleaders, champions, if you would, of not only promoting and pushing this, but advocating that we continue to do more, continue to create options to invest in our young people. For that, I want to say thank you to both of you, and thank you to your colleagues as well. I also want to thank Uche Bean. Rise Up Birmingham. I remember when we talked about this at this podium before you all, when you supported it. But just as a reminder, it was a 30-day community empowerment and violence prevention program that reached more than 100 young people and adults across our city. It was in partnership with Miles College and the Institute for Research on Social Justice in Action. The city of Birmingham created an experience that combined not only workforce development, not only entrepreneurship, but my favorite part, grassroots leadership training. And it was all centered on healing and transformation, not just for these young people you see here, but for our community as a whole. So we want to be clear. Your investment as a council, your vote made this possible. You helped fund more than just a program. You helped create generational change. You helped fund hope, you helped fund purpose, but you gave opportunity as well to some of our city's most vulnerable, yet promising, young people. Last Wednesday, Rise Up Birmingham had an actual graduation. And some of these graduates program-wise were formally incarcerated. Some had been impacted by gun violence. And today, the small business owners, mental health advocates, junior violence interrupters, a lot of the young people you see standing here, and community practitioners prepared to lead our community and our city. This is what real prevention looks like. These are the faces of hope and dreams we invest in. It's what happens when we invest in people and our next and younger generations before there's an actual crisis. And so I want to thank our partners, one being President Bobby Knight of Miles College, Dr. Geraldine Agi, also of Miles College, as well as Dr. Jamila T. Davis and Angelo Pinto Esquire of the Institute for Research on Social Justice in Action. This partnership brought not only institutional resources, but care, as well as structure and mentorship. So again, thank you to our Chairwoman of Public Safety, Latonya Tate, who has been a fierce advocate for this work and making me a true believer. Thank you to Crystal Smitherman, who early on led the charge and said, run us our money. She did not say that. That's why we call a joke. But thank you so much, for real. I want to tell you more about what the growth looks like on the ground. And so at this time, I want to invite up our Director of Community Safety Initiatives, Uche Bean, to speak, to speak more about what happened this summer.
Good morning, everyone. Oh, that microphone is loud. It's on for sure. So thank you, Mayor Woodfin, really for the opportunity to speak and for your bold leadership reimagining what public safety can look like in Birmingham. And this is really just the beginning. Rise Up Birmingham was a 30-day intensive program for both young people and adults. So during the morning, from 9:00 until almost 2:00, we had some of these young people, and I'm going to allow them the opportunity to introduce themselves to you because they have some more to tell y'all because they got, they got some work for y'all to do. And then we also had our adult, we had two programs, one called Flipping the Game and one called a community practitioner program. Flipping the Game was to help entrepreneurs who might have been participating in things that were not that great, or maybe needed to understand how business really worked. And we flipped the game and helped them become entrepreneurs and funded their business. And then in addition, the community practitioner program, we just really funded a lot of nonprofit organizations that are local here, that are doing work, that are supporting our families and our communities. And so that was the 30-day. And then, of course, we had our Junior Violence Interrupters, our Leadership Program, and a youth entrepreneurship program that occurred over those 30 days. And some of them are here with us. But before I let these wonderful leaders introduce themselves, I do want to thank some really important partners. Obviously, I want to thank you all. If you all had not voted for this back in December, for us to be able to elevate our programs here in Birmingham, none of this would have been possible. So thank you all for your vote of confidence in this work. Your support means everything, and you see the fruits of what you all voted for, so thank you. We also followed the Crime Commission report, which asked us to expand programming, and this is what you're seeing here today. In addition, we have our people from Jefferson County Family Resource Center, who runs our Juvenile Reentry Program, Restore. So I really want to thank them for being here. Carrie Bunson and Anske Williams. Also, our Department of Youth Services here with the city of Birmingham was a great partner in helping us find youth to participate in our program. Birmingham City Schools, great partner, who also helped us find some young people. The Community Foundation of Greater Birmingham, Chris and Adi and his people, they were really supportive and helped us. New Direction was the facilitators of that work. And of course, Miles College, they let us use their campus, and they were extremely hospitable, and we really enjoyed ourselves. And of course, it was all powered by the Institute for Social Justice Research in Action. So thank you all. And I want to allow, if you would, for these young people to introduce themselves. And then we have a really short video, which is a part of their project. So I want to introduce overall Bulletproof Voices. This is who's behind me, so I'm going to let them come up, their name and their age. So Bulletproof Voices, whoever wants to come up first.
Hi, I'm Nivea Shepherd. I'm the co-president for Bulletproof Voices. I'm 15 years old.
Hi, my name is Landon Barnes, and I'm also a co-president of Bulletproof Voices, and I'm 16.
Oh, they can't say what school, I'm sorry, school?
I go to Alabama Aerospace and Aviation High School in Bessemer.
I'm moving schools, but I used to go to Cornerstone Schools of Alabama.
My name is Navariya Smith. I go to Pleasant Grove, and I'm 15, and I'm the vice president of Bulletproof Voices.
My name is Philip Granger, and I am 15 years old, and I go to Hoover High School.
My name, ooh. My name, Romeo Lowe. I'm 17, and I go to Huffman High.
Good morning. My name is Cole Perryman. I'm 17, and I go to John Carroll Catholic High School.
My name is Jatavian Barnes. I'm 15, and I go to Jetsonola.
My name is Jantias Effenj, and I go to Jetsonola.
Okay, awesome. And if you all don't mind, I would love for y'all to see this video that they put together for you for Bulletproof Voices. If we can queue it up, right?
Bulletproof Voices is a very helpful summer program, teaching you about violence and conflict resolution, solving problems, helping others and managing, creating your own business.
We're learning how to defuse violence and to like stop the situation before it amps up and not to engage into the situation and like add fire to the situation, but to stop it.
Conflict is not always the option. Fighting people, violence, it's not it. You gotta find coping skills to let stuff go, you know?
So my favorite part of this program was the entrepreneurship part and the boss-up. I really liked how she taught us how money works and how we need to flip things. And like the things that we're doing, like the stuff that we enjoy, we can make money off of it. We can be our own bosses.
I feel like the program can help the community a lot by being here and trying to talk to kids that are not really in the right place. I feel like it's helped with a lot of violence, a lot of death, a lot of like things they get with people even while they're in jail. A lot of people that have died need the program.
This was a very great program, and everyone should have an opportunity to do it.
I think it's honestly a great place to like come and be a safe place, where there's no ops, no fighting, no violence, nothing to prove. Somewhere where it's nice and like safe for people to like just be themselves, basically.
So thank y'all so much, and we really appreciate it. Of course, I want Councilman Smitherman and Councilwoman Latonya Tate. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Uche. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues for trusting, you know, the leadership. Thank Dr. Jamila T. Davis, Dr. Agi, Dr. Bobby Knight. Prior to being elected, this journey around public safety was spearheaded by my two colleagues, Council Woods and Council Smitherman. And so we just took the ball and we just ran. But thank these young people, thank the bulletproof, our young violent interrupters, who, you know, learn, you know, how to change their lifestyle, you know, and to learn what it means to be credible messengers. And thank Dr. Davis and everything that they've done to pour into these young people and pair them with mentors, thank Anske, Carrie. We don't, we want to thank Yoshef Keshyamine, because one of the young people was given an opportunity, a job, because he wants to be a chef. But they've been paired with mentors, you know, to birth their visions. I was able to purchase me a shirt from London and look these young people up and purchase some of their products. But thank you all. Again, Mayor, thank you for trusting the leadership, and there's more to come. Thank you all.
She's making me speak. Thank you to Uche Bean, because you and Brandon Johnson, y'all have been working on this for years. And you know, a lot of times in this game, in policy work, is about persistence. And you stay persistent, and because of y'all's persistence, Birmingham has changed. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for my colleagues, because it takes a lot to step out on faith in addressing crime, going outside of just policing, but also investing in our youth. I know a lot of people will say, oh, you guys don't invest in youth. You don't have enough money in the budget. But we have proof back here that we are investing in the next generation. That's how we improve Birmingham. Adults, it's hard for adults to change their ways. But if you want to see Birmingham change, you invest in the youth. So they actually have some great ideas. I know they didn't talk about it, like I think y'all had like a basketball game, a forum. So I would love for us to sit down with them eventually and see how we can support them, so. And thank you, Mayor Woodfin. I really appreciate you. I know you're finally getting some recognition for being very progressive. It took us a while to get you there, but we got you there. But for you to be progressive and addressing crime, I know you're finally getting the recognition nationally. But I want you to know that the people at home, we thank you for what you do, so thank you for that.
Good morning. My name is Noah Rose, on behalf of Restore. And I would like to present you all with a shirt from the Restore.
Good morning. It's good to see everyone. Dr. Geraldine Agi, Senior Vice President of Strategic Initiatives at Miles College, and a big fan of everyone in this room. And on behalf of President Bobby Knight, it was our honor to host this group of young people and this group of practitioners and our leaders on our campus at Miles College. It was truly an honor, and I'm so grateful to Mayor Woodfin for his vision and for believing in us and having us to be shepherds for this great program. And one thing that hasn't been mentioned yet that I want to mention on behalf of President Bobby Knight, on that day, scholarships were offered to people who wanted to come to college. And we're looking forward to spending a long time with these students, and we're looking forward to more of this. And thank you so much on behalf of Miles College.
And the last one, Dr. Agi mentioned the scholarships. So we don't have the video, but one of the practitioners, her name is Candace Kemp. And you all may not know who she is, but she actually is the mother of the young lady that was killed during the Hush shooting. And so she was one of the people that participated in Anitra. And she was one of the young people that participated, not only in our practitioner program, but also was awarded a scholarship to attend Miles College. And she'll be attending with her son in the fall. So a lot of good things happen during this program. And again, I end here, I just thank you all again for your belief, and we hope that we can do this next year and again infuse more people in the Greater Birmingham community and overall our city. Thank y'all.
I just want to thank my colleagues again that have worked directly with this program. This is critically important, especially at a time where we see federal resources being pulled back for these types of programs. So again, just thank you. This is something that's, you know, like you said, changing lives. Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to join in and just congratulate you all for this work. And I do believe in it, and I know Councilor Tate is always on us to really plunge in more, but I tell her, you know, that's what I have you for. But, but I am a fan of this work, and I believe in it. And I just want to commend you all for this, because this is really where the real transformation happens for our society. And, and so hats off to you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
And Landon, Mr. President, I wanted to speak on Bulletproof Voices.
Okay, I want to speak on Bulletproof Voices, what it actually is. It'll be an organization where we kind of get out into the community, especially in Birmingham, because we know our city is kind of dangerous, and we don't want it to stay like that forever. So we want to get out hosts, events, like basketball games. We want to throw a music festival. We want to really bring the community together. And a way we think we could do that is because we are youth, and no one listens to youth like the youth. I feel like it would be great for us to do that.
Also, we want to be able to have like school programs, and we really want to teach people like how guns like affect us. And like, we did a whole PowerPoint and everything, but we researched how our laws on guns and how the death rate and people dying is on for, because of guns, because of how we treat them in our state. And I really think that if we teach the students and we teach kids and we understand, and then that'll start teaching other people and their adults that these things need to stop, and we need to start changing things if we want the next generation to be better than what we were. And we want to, we hope to have events and have things happen a lot that would like grow our community and bring us all together. Like we, and Landon had said, the basketball tournament or the music festival. And we would just hope to, especially entrepreneurship, we would promote all that stuff and showing that we don't have to do things that are behind people's bags. We don't have to do things undercover, and we can be great, and we can be, do good things, like for good things, you get what I'm saying? But that's what Bulletproof Voices is. We have a social media page, and we just hope to promote positivity and all the good things that we're trying to do in our community.
You've been kind with your time, but this is our youth, and you see they're actually leading us, which is so cool. So that concludes the mayor's report. If I could, just have your two colleagues stand right here, capture a picture, so they don't have to go outside and miss the next thing you're going to do in your business.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Clark, do we have any announcements for boards and agencies?
Yes, sir. Uh, we have a vacancy with the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute. Uh, Ryan K. Falk, uh, term expires September the first, two thousand and twenty-five, and it's a three-year term, and it's under the Arts and Cultural Committee.
Okay, thank you. Um, actually, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I apologize. Um, Council Williams had a, uh, inquiry for you. No problem.
I'll just get with you on it.
Okay, wait, alright. Um, I'll read our, uh, statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. For re-matter, for remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation marked with a P will be read, and all public hearings marked with PH will be announced. Ms. Clark, let's please read through our consent agenda items.
Okay, consent agenda starts on page two with item two. Page fifteen. Item three, items three, four, five, six, and seven are on consent. Page sixteen. Item number ten is on consent. Page seventeen. Items eleven, twelve, and thirteen are on consent. Please note that on item eleven, we're going to add twenty-five hundred dollars to the amount, and that would make the total amount seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars, and, uh, the amounts are coming from District One and District Five, District Two, I'm sorry, District Two and District Five. District Two, uh, one thousand dollars, GL account, zero, zero, one, underscore, zero, 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 underscore, zero, four, two, two, zero, point, five, four, two, dash, zero, zero, one. And District Five, fifteen hundred dollars, GL account number is zero, zero, one, underscore, zero, 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 underscore, zero, four, two, five, zero, point, five, four, two, dash, zero, zero, one. And we'll pick it back up with the consent agenda on page eighteen, with items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Page nineteen, we have items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are on consent. Page twenty, items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty are on consent. Page twenty-one, items thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six are on consent. Page twenty-two, items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one are on consent. Page twenty-three, items forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four are on consent. Page twenty-four, items forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight are on consent. Page twenty-five, items forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two are on consent. Page twenty-six, items fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight are on consent, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from a consent agenda? I would like to add item number one, um, if there's no objection.
Uh, I have an objection to it.
Okay, alright, we'll leave it off. Okay. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item number two, uh, there is one case, uh, on page ten, number zero, zero, eight, nine, nine, that should be removed. They were working on it yesterday. Um, is, do we need to take the item off, or can we just remove that one item?
We'll, we'll remove the one item and the other portion of the item, the, no, item number two can remain on consent. So that's page ten, the case number is EEN twenty-twenty-five dash zero, zero, eight, nine, nine, and it's three oh nine, Fourth Terrace North.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, other items. Uh, I have some, okay. So items, uh, forty and forty-one on page twenty-two. And item forty-two on page twenty-three. And also, uh, item forty-three on page twenty-three. Anything else? Alright. Item number two is a public hearing item that is on our consent agenda. Do any members of the public wish to, uh, remove that item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we are ready for a motion. Right, Ms. Clark?
Alright, one second, please. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Alright, the consent agenda is approved. Our first item is i- um, item number one.
Okay. Um, before I read item one, just note that the, um, application was amended to reflect, uh, the address is nine oh four, um, nine oh four, ninety-four oh one, Mosley Loop Road, Morris, Alabama, three, five, one, one, six. That should be the updated address for the amended application. And so item one, a resolution granting operating authority permit with one certificate of public necessity and convenience to pull up, uh, Bham LLC, twelve twenty-five, Eighteenth Place Southwest, Birmingham, Alabama, three, five, two, eleven, to be used in the operation of a limousine, uh, pre-arranged transport upon the, the public streets of Birmingham and to and from location within the city in accordance with the provisions of Title Twelve, Chapter Sixteen of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, nineteen eighty, as amended, or may be amended. Motion, please. Item is before you.
Alright, Counselor Smitherman.
So, let me make sure, Mr. Clark, that means the twelve twenty-five, Eighteenth Place Southwest address is incorrect, is now, was it?
Ninety-four oh one, Mosley Loop Road, Morris, Alabama.
Okay, so does that mean it won't be in the neighborhood anymore? I guess whoever can answer, Counselor Klein, or?
No, I remember this coming up before.
Yeah, the residents had some issues with the parking.
Right.
With this.
I don't have any information on Mosley Ru- Loop Road.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Is the applicant present?
I don't think so.
Counselor Clark?
So do we issue these for other jurisdictions if this is Morris, Alabama?
Yes, so, um, this is their CNPC to operate in the city of Birmingham, um, so their business location can be anywhere.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, do y'all want to do a two-week delay so we could allow them to fix whatever other issues that the neighborhood has, Smitherman?
Yes.
Alright, so a motion for two-week delay on this item.
Alright, it's, uh, Tate. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That motion is approved. Uh, next item is item number eight.
Item eight. An ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and seven cents to execute a quick claim deed to Sherman J. Mickles for the sale of property legally described as Lot One, Block One, Enslie Realty Company, addition to Enslie Mapbook Six, page eighty-two, recorded in the office of the Judge of Probate of Jefferson County, Alabama, and located at seventeen oh one, Eighteenth Street, Enslie, Birmingham, Alabama, three, five, two, one, eight, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement lease in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the General Code of the City of Birmingham. And this is an item of permanent operation to pass that I need you to see today.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn.
Aye.
Motion on the item, please.
I move the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
Alright, is there any discussion on this item? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Item eight is approved. Item nine, please.
Item nine, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and thirty-one cents to execute a quick claim deed to Demis Zell Copeland for the sale of property legally described as Lot Four, J.D. Simpson Survey Mapbook Five, page thirty-eight, in the probate office of Jefferson County, Alabama, and located at sixteen thirty-three Sixth Street, North Birmingham, Alabama, three, five, two, oh, four, which was acquired by the C. Department of Foreclosure Municipal Improvement Leaks in accordance with section three dash one, four C of the General Code of the City of Birmingham. Again, this is an item of permanent operation, and I need you to see. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Uh, President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Uh, Council President O'Quinn.
Aye.
Any discussion or?
Motion on the item.
I move the item.
Item is before you.
Okay, any discussion? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Alright, that item, item nine is approved. Next item is item forty, please.
Alright, one second, please. Forty. Alright, item forty, and resolution accepting lump sum proposal of J.H. Wright and Associates, uh, twenty-seven thirty-three, uh, twenty-seven, three ninety-five, Apollo Road, uh, Daphne, Alabama, in the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars for the smoke riser pump replacement of the leach- leachate, pump, leachate pump at New Georgia Landfill in Eastern Area Landfill located in Birmingham, this being the lowest responsible and responsible proposal submitted, authorized the mayor to enter a contract with J.H. Wright and Associates, substantially the form contained within the proposal documents in accordance with said proposal, providing that the total compensation payable on the contract, not to see the appropriation. Motion, please.
I move approval.
Alright, submit motion in a second. And so, um, Ms. Clark, let's also read, uh, number forty-one, please.
Forty-one. A resolution accepting lump sum be the, um, proposal of J.H. Wright and Associates, twenty-seven thirty-nine, Apollo Road, Daphne, Alabama, in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars for the Northeast pump, bulk rehab replacement of leachate pump at Eastern Area Landfill located in Birmingham, this being the lowest responsible and responsible proposal submitted, authorized the mayor to enter a contract with J.H. Wright and Associates, and substantially the form contained within the proposal documents in accordance with said proposal, providing that the total compensation payable on the contract, not to see the appropriation.
Okay, move the item.
Second.
Uh, both of before you.
Alright, so, um, I took these off of consent, and my question is, is that, uh, several months ago, the administration brought to us a, um, emergency repair notification for the leachate system. I believe it was at the Eastern Area Landfill, and, um, so there was, I'm gonna assume that there was some work done on the leachate system, uh, at that landfill at that time, so I'm just asking, or I would like to know, um, what the difference, you know, between that work and this work is.
Yes, sir. That work is, is done. This is related to an A.D.M. requirement to make sure, um, that, that pump and its use, um, protects the groundwater.
Okay, alright. Counselor Abbott.
I would not have taken this off for this question, but since it's been taken off, when we pump the leachate, where do we pump it to?
I don't know. So do you want me to bring in a team member to answer that question?
Well, I mean, somebody could just answer it later, but I've always wondered.
Later, later will be five minutes or less.
Okay. Well, I would like to know, I mean, does it, is it pumped into a truck and hauled to a facility or?
Get all nine of you an answer in less than five minutes.
Okay, good, thank you. I don't spend much time at the dump, and I, I do wonder sometimes.
Yes, ma'am. We'll get you an answer, all of you.
Thank you.
Alright, we toured the landfill several years ago, um, but I can't remember, you know, the details of how that works.
But, well, I've, I've toured it several times, but, you know, I still don't know where the leachate.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
To your colleague's question, um, it's for everybody, um, tank farm, and then to Jefferson County Sanitary Sewer. T.A.N.K., to a tank farm, and then to Jefferson County Sanitary Sewer.
Okay, so it goes to a tank farm. Do they treat it and then put it in the sewer?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Alright.
We could be drinking that stuff. You better, better know where it's going.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. Um, Ms. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, so items forty and forty-one are approved. Item forty-two, please.
Item forty-two, a resolution accepting lump sum be the AMAC Construction Development, one thousand three, Wilkes Road, Midfield, Alabama, in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the two thousand and twenty-five general construction work order contract located in Birmingham, this being the lowest responsible and responsible bid submitted, authorized the mayor to enter to a contract, AMAC Construction and Development, and substantially the form contained within the bid documents in accordance with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract, not to see the appropriation. Motion, please.
I move approval.
One second. Um, okay, so I took this off of consent, and, you know, the company documents are extensive, and, uh, looked through their, but my general question is, is that, you know, are there specific capital improvements that this, uh, work is associated with? And what are those?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Um, sanitary sewer work repairs, and that's what it's isolated to, um, tank work orders for repairs if something comes up. They're in a position to handle those repairs for us. But isolated to sanitary sewer work.
Okay, then, so this is in addition to the, I think it was around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a contract that we also approved recently?
Yes, sir, on top of that. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Council Williams.
So is it sanitary sewer repair work for facilities that the city of Birmingham owns, or is it sanitary sewer repair work for street? Or is it the sewer itself? This is for what we own, sir.
Storm sewer. Storm sewer.
No, sanitary sewer.
You said sanitary sewer.
He said sanitary.
Let me correct myself. Let me just get a note, because I don't want to misspeak, and I did misspeak, so I apologize. Capital projects says that's separate, um, no sanitary sewer work. Capital Projects says that's separate, um, no sanitary sewer work. So, let me get them to come in, if you don't mind, to give more, uh, answer that's actually valid, so I don't misspeak again. So, at this time, I'd like to have Ms. Bell, Denise Bell, Capital Projects, come in and answer your, his question, and then give an update to your question. So, could you repeat your question?
Yeah, so the, um, item is listed on the agenda, just says general construction work order contract. And, um, so my question was, what specifically are we doing here? And then, um, you know, the mayor's response was sewer repairs. Uh, so Counsel Williams wanted to get more detail. Turn on your mic, please.
How about that? Okay. Denise Bell, Service Director of Capital Projects. This is an I.D.I.Q. work order contract. This is number four. Out of the, the four that I told you about a few weeks ago, you saw the storm sewer work order, the roof repair work order, the CCTV and cleaning work order, and now this is general construction for facilities. So, the work has not been identified because it's a work order contract. So, we would actually have to get a request or identify issues at buildings, whether it be windows, doors, et cetera, is public works associated.
Okay, Counsel Clark.
Yeah, I just wanted to call your attention to, like, in their paperwork, there's a checklist that has all these different work items they could be, uh, asked to do. Um, I don't know, you might have missed it in there.
Yeah, it's, it's only a couple of hundred pages.
But it's a lot of different activities that they can, um, be asked to do. But I'm just wondering, do you, do they quote on it, or, or it's based on unit prices that are?
Terrible, let's be said, unit prices.
Unit pricing. Okay, so they give us unit pricing for an indefinite quantity of these different items.
Yes.
And then we have a, a maximum not to exceed amount that we can go up to within the year.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Well, this seems like a way to get things done more expeditiously, and I think this could really help us. When I think about, um, my favorite jazz is the leaks in the, uh, West Precinct, but anyway, I know it's on the way, so.
Alright, thank you, Counsel Clark. Counsel Williams?
Is this how we've done, is it, is this new, or, or is this how we've done this in the past for these, the items and the?
This is a new process that we undertake, and a procurement process to help us to be more responsible and reduce equity across the enterprise. So, we don't have to do the same thing for the same type of work every time. It is low dollar amounts because we are testing it.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, item forty-two is approved. Item forty-three, please.
Item forty-three, a resolution accepting and approving the bid of All Traffic Solutions Incorporated State College, Pennsylvania for law enforcement equipment as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the Assistant Purchasing Agent for a period of one year, contingent upon council approval of the Transportation Department, per the Southwood Cooperative Contract number zero nine zero one two two dash ATS. Motion, please.
Motion, move the item.
Second.
Alright, uh, so I took this off of consent also. Um, so my question is, it, it says it's for, and there, I didn't see any, uh, uh, accompanying documentation. Um, this says it's for law enforcement equipment for the Transportation Department, so, um.
Yeah, sounds a little weird, right?
Yep.
So, it's, it is both departments. The barric, the street barricades are for road blocking, so that will be, of course, administered by, um, B-Dot, um, as well as message boards administered by B-Dots as well. But the use of the barricades also be used by the police department.
Okay.
I apologize.
Yep, no problem, thank you. That explains it. Alright, any other questions on this item? Ms. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Item forty-three is approved. Item forty-nine, I mean fifty-nine, please.
Item fifty-nine, a resolution setting a public hearing September the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, to consider closure of Twentieth Avenue South, near its intersection with Rich Arden Jr. Boulevard South, Birmingham, to vehicle the traffic to control traffic flow from neighboring businesses.
Second.
Any discussion on this, on this item? Ms. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item fifty-nine is approved. That brings us to our announcements. Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, in District Eight, we have a few neighborhood meetings coming up. Uh, this evening is Fairview Neighborhood via conference call. You can call our office to get that dial-in number. Also, Thomas Neighborhood meets tonight at six thirty P.M. at Mount Hebron, uh, Church Thomas. And on Monday, oh, they're not meeting? Oh, okay. I stand corrected. And you'll maybe hear this announcement again, but that meeting's gonna be at Greater Saint Thomas Baptist Church. And I wanna say hello to Julia Juarez, the Thomas Neighborhood President, who's with us today. Uh, also, Monday, uh, August eleventh, the Tuxedo Neighborhood will meet. Okay, okay. Okay, so the Thomas Neighborhood Association Meeting, uh, which is, uh, some, some territory that's shared with District Eight and District Nine, is, um, gonna be at the Greater Saint Thomas Baptist Church, which is a change from their usual location. That address is one fifteen First Street, Thomas, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one four. Thank you. And on Monday, August eleventh, the Tuxedo Neighborhood will meet at five thirty at the East Enslie Library. And at six thirty, Rising West Princeton and Enslie Highlands. Both, uh, neighborhoods meet at six thirty on August eleventh. Rising West Princeton at the Neighborhood Community Center and Enslie Highlands at the Five Points West Regional Library. This evening, or the first Tuesday of every August, is National Night Out. And it's an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make neighborhoods safer and more caring places to live. Uh, Bush Hills Neighborhood in District Eight has a long tradition of really doing it up for National Night Out. Uh, one of the ways neighbors, uh, support the police department is by shot, burning a blue porch light. And that's one of their traditions, and also having several gatherings around the neighborhood, uh, sort of block parties in people's yards. So, I will be at the home of the, I think the front yard of Ms. Dora Sims this evening. And so, uh, I encourage you to find out if anything's going on in your neighborhood. If you got a blue light bulb, stick it in your front porch and just, um, demonstrate that solidarity with our, uh, men and women in blue. And I'd like to just conclude by wishing all scholars, ages K through eight, a happy first day of school this week and a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Clark. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, today, we will have the Fairmont Neighborhood Association Meeting, um, taking place at six P.M. at Mount Carmel Christ Church. Uh, and then we will also have the Brumet Heights Neighborhood Association Meeting taking place this Thursday at one P.M. at the Brownsville Heights Community Center. Uh, on Monday, we will have Inglewood that will take place at five thirty at the Inglewood Rec Center. Airport Highlands that will take place at six P.M. at Pleasant View Baptist Church. Woodlawn that will take place at six P.M. at Willow Wood, Willow Wood Rec Center. And, uh, Roebuck that will take place at the East Precinct, uh, at six thirty as well. Um, let me see. We'll also have our Community Development Committee meeting today at two P.M., uh, in the council chambers. We'll have the Park and Recreation Board meeting that will take place tomorrow at nine A.M. at the Legion Field Maxine Herring Boardroom. Uh, as has already been mentioned, the Critical Repair Program, uh, is, uh, will be taking application on September fourth and fifth. Um, this week, they will be having the info session, uh, on August the seventh at five thirty P.M. at the Birmingham Crossplex. Uh, you must occupy your home, you must provide proof of ownership. Uh, you must also be an applicant who, um, qualifies as low to moderate income, uh, and provide proof of income of all your household residence. And last but not least, applicants must provide the last two months of bank statements, uh, for all household residence. Thank you. Um, the Safe Haven After School Programs, um, is, uh, starting up. They have registrations open for grades K through eight. Uh, limited slots are available. Program begins August the eleventh, uh, which is, uh, next week, uh, Monday through Thursday from three thirty P.M. to seven P.M. Uh, and Friday from three thirty P.M. to six P.M. They'll offer reading initiatives, chess club, homework assistance, creative writing, tutoring, and more. Uh, please take advantage of it if, uh, you have some young people that can. Uh, Central Park, Enslie, Fountain Heights, Hawkins, uh, Don Hawkins, Inglewood, Rec Center Memorial, and M.L.K. are all participating sites. To learn more information, go to, um, or call two zero five two five four two three nine one. Uh, wanted to, uh, announce that District Four is having the first day of school attendance contest. Uh, the District Four school with the highest first day attendance will win a free shaved ice party. Um, a shaved ice truck will visit the winning school and serve free shaved ice, uh, to every student. So, uh, this is in partnership with myself and, uh, school board member Derek Billups. Uh, we really wanna make sure that we have a, uh, strong attendance on the first day of school. Um, as has already been mentioned, the, uh, National Night Out will take place. Uh, East Precinct Neighborhoods, uh, will take place, uh, today, uh, five thirty to eight P.M. Free food, free drinks, free entertainment. For more information, uh, go to Birmingham Police Department, East Precinct, six hundred Red Lane Road, or call Ms. Beckett Wallace, uh, at two zero five two four zero two nine zero seven. Uh, and last but not least, I wanted to make sure that, I also announced that we are in the process of taking applications to fill the Birmingham Land Bank Authority. We have several vacancies, uh, and so if you are interested, please make sure that you go to, uh, Granicus, uh, behammale dot granicus dot com so that you can fill out an application to, uh, be a part of that board. And that conclude, I got two requests for the mayor, uh, also. One, um, I did want to make sure that, you know, um, if there was an update about the sinkhole uh, over in the Maple Grove Neighborhood, uh, if somebody could, you know, just give me an update on that. Uh, and then I know that, you know, several months ago, um, had made requests about some speed, uh, cushions and, uh, traffic calming for the Collegeville Neighborhood. Um, I wanna say that there are some representatives from the Housing Authority that, you know, would like to partner with the city, uh, to be able to make that happen. And so, I wanted to make sure that, you know, we were able to connect on that.
Yes, sir, Counselor. We'll get you a follow-up on those.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August thirteenth at three thirty P.M. here in the council chambers. As far as neighborhood associations are concerned, the Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood meets tonight at the Avondale Library at six thirty. Last night, we had a meeting of the Glen Iris Neighborhood. There were lots of questions about our accessible playground that's being installed in Bessie's Estelle Park. So, I'm hopeful that someone can provide us information. Bessie Estelle Park Accessible Playground. We've been working on this, getting this done for over fifteen years. So, I think it's time to see something come to fruition. And lots of people are asking questions and there's very little information, so, um, but people are interested. If you have concerns or issues in your neighborhood, please call three one one, or better yet, download the My Behamm three one one app to your phone, and you can send photographs of all of the problems you see in our neighborhoods, and you can write the description just the way you want it to be worded. So, I, uh, encourage people to use the app. And then, when you want to know the condition of your request, you can go back and see who it was assigned to and see if they think it's finished. And if you don't agree, you can turn it in again, which sometimes it takes repeated turn-ins to get the right results. But, it's a great app. And as always, we're asking residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website, which is W.W.W. dot my, excuse me, behamm district three dot com. I've said my behamm three one one too many times. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Counselor, uh, Abbott. Counselor Moore, you wanted me to come back to you?
Yes, sir. Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I did wanna announce that, uh, Roddy Allen's, uh, funeral will take place, uh, Friday, August the fifteenth, at, uh, Oak Street Baptist Church. Uh, and so, wanted to, you know, uh, definitely make that announcement, and then, uh, the Men of Praise will be performing. Okay, so, Mr. Dallas Abernathy of the Men of Praise passed. Um, so definitely wanna, you know, send our condolences, uh, to him.
Alright, thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Smithman, happy early birthday.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. We're thrilled to share that our Heal the Block event was an incredible success. Um, shout out to Counselor Tate, Uche Bean, Chad Freeman, Commissioner Tyson, O.A.A. Um, it was great. We were able to hand out school supplies, free food, uh, DJ Bad Boy Butch, Lady Wu, kept everybody hype and going. It was really, really great. We had some good vendors, so, um, shout out to everybody involved. Neighborhood meetings, we have Oakwood Place Neighborhood. That will be tonight at four P.M. at Harrison Park Recreation Center. The Mason City will meet, uh, virtually at four thirty P.M. via teleconference. The call-in number is seven one two seven seven eight zero one seven. The code is eight four three four two six. This is very important. There is a Zone D three rezoning proposal. Um, North Tidusville will meet tomorrow at five P.M. at Memorial Park. And then, I think Weston Manor also meets on Monday, I believe. They do. They meet on Monday, August eleventh at five P.M. at New Hope Baptist Church. And then we will also have the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be on three thirty here in the council chambers. On Monday, August eleventh, submissions are due tomorrow by noon. And then we also will have, well, the area will have a National Night Out tonight from six to eight P.M. This is hosted by Green Liberty and New Purgram Baptist Church. This is a free event. Uh, the location is one two one Fifth Avenue South, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two oh five. Uh, this will be a visit from the local South Precinct Police Captain and Representatives, a nice, a night of solidarity and unity, police and community partnership, and probably the best part, free food. Um, so, and I also would like to wish my nephew a happy birthday. His birthday is actually on Saturday as well. He will be turning fifteen. And I hope all the students have a great first day of school on Thursday. And I pray it is very safe and that we have high attendance on the first day of school. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, and happy belated birthday to Protem Alexander.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all. Uh, these are announcements for District Seven. I would like to start first by offering, uh, asking for unanimous consent to offer a resolution of sympathy for the passing of Mr. William Cade. Mr. Cade was the Vice President of Jermania Park, Jermania Park Neighborhood Association. He had, um, a lot of health issues and had to step down from the position, but he was one of the first people to welcome me uh, into service in District Seven, so I would like to ask for unanimous consent for a resolution of sympathy.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, and now the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Alright.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you. I know the residents and the family of Mr. Cade are thankful for that recognition. recognition. Um, just talking about back to school, we know that we are, as the mayor and other councils have already discussed, we are two days out from the first day of school for Birmingham City Schools and other, uh, school systems around the district. I also want to offer a, um, really hopeful that they have a great, very productive school year. I hope you'll keep your ear to the ground to listen to, um, Birmingham City Schools has had some, a lot of recognition in the past few weeks about, um, the number of schools that have gone from failing to passing, uh, some of the initiatives they've had in math, and so, let's just keep the students, faculty, staff, everyone, the families, wishing them a great school year. We were very excited last week to join Dr. Melvin Love and his staff at Oxmoor Valley Elementary for a back-to-school, uh, rally and spirit. Had a lot of resources and a lot of smiling faces that we got to see out there at Ox Valley. Um, also, would like to thank the members of the Grace Club, CDC, and the Roosevelt City, the East and West Brownsville Neighborhoods. They came together for a community day on Saturday. Uh, there was a lot of back-to-school resources, it was a fair, um, very successful. We had over four hundred res- uh, residents to register and come out and take, um, advantage of the items that were presented to them, even gave free haircuts. And so, as, um, District Seven, we were happy to partner with them and to also support that effort. On July thirty-first, it was National Intern Day, and this is a day every year on the last Thursday in July that is set aside to recognize and appreciate the contributions of interns. We've had some interns during this summer, and I do want to acknowledge our intern in the District Seven office, Ms. Caitlin Copeland. If Caitlin, if you'll stand, Caitlin is going to be leaving us on, um, the fifteenth. She's going back to Tuskegee University where she will be a rising sophomore, uh, majoring in veterinary medicine. Caitlin worked on a project that was very important to us in District Seven. She took our three one one and other, um, issues that we have in the district and mapped it out, so we have a clear visual, we're going to be able to track that, and she's very excited to share that information with you all. So, uh, thank you so much, Caitlin, it was a joy and a pleasure to have you working in our office, so thank you, we'll really miss you, and we wish you a great sophomore year. Uh, next, on Thursday, August seventh, we, and let me give her a hand. As already has been discussed, the, uh, Thursday is, uh, one of the information sessions for the Critical Repair Program. That's a very important program, even though we have, um, I think it's what, a hundred residents that could get thirty thousand each, and so we know that people, there are more people than that that are in need of those services. But I do, um, encourage everyone to attend those, if that last information session, that will be at the Birmingham Crossplex at five thirty, five thirty on Thursday, August seventh. And I believe that's it, and just, um, thank you again for those birthday greetings. We didn't get the fire truck to pull up to extinguish all the flames on the candles, but, um, we survived, so thank you, thank you. Oh, last thing, I do have to do this, got to do a little business. Um, I do want to ask Chief, we did have a house that was demolished on, um, I'll give you the address, it's over in the, um, Garden Highlands Neighborhood. The question is, what is the period of time, I'm sorry, Riley Neighborhood, what is the period of time that the contractor must come back and be sure they clear the area? The house was demolished, but they've left a lot of rocks, fence is still standing and those type things. Do we have a time period that the contract, contractor has to come back out and finish that work?
So, it's not a set one, but we'll follow up with our, depending on which, um, which department, whether it's PP or DPW, we'll follow up with them to make sure that there's resolution of that. But it's always sooner than later, so there should be within the next couple of days they come in and clear it out.
Okay, well, we'll be sure to get, we have pictures and, um, for the residents, just wanted to ensure that that work is completed. Very grateful for that home to have been part of the demolition, but just want to be sure that the area looks nice after we finish, so thank you.
Please share that, we'll, we'll get it done.
Thank you, that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Williams.
Thanks, um, Economic Development Tourism Work Session will be today at eleven thirty in Conference Rooms D and E. Uh, Overton Neighborhood will be meeting tonight, August, which is the fifth, uh, at six o'clock at Macedonia Baptist Church. Uh, Saturday, August the ninth, Mitchell's Place is having their fifth annual Dragon Boat Racing Festival at Eastlake Park. Um, happy to be part of that again, and I think that that is one of, um, you know, Birmingham has a ton of awesome nonprofits and charities, and I think that they, their, their work speaks for itself in, in that, and so, um, their work is, uh, for folks that are, um, on the spectrum and have other different types of, uh, learning disabilities, and I think that, um, that, that when they're able to, the outcomes that they're able to get for their clients is, is really remarkable. Uh, East Precinct, uh, will be hosting, uh, National Night Out, uh, tonight. Uh, we are providing Mo's Barbecue, uh, for everybody, for the officers and those that attend National Night Out, which I think is the free food that was mentioned earlier. But, uh, but anyway, we're happy to do so, um, and that is all I have.
We didn't get the fish fry, so let's go on over there and we're going to.
All right, thank you, Counsel Williams. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. President, I would like to move for a unanimous consent to offer resolution of sympathy for Ms. Juanita Brew, who was the president of the Sandusky Neighborhood who passed away on last week. And our funeral service will be August tonight, this Saturday, at the St. Luke Baptist Church in Prayer City located at two two nine DeKalb Street, Birmingham. And let me say.
Second, second.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
What was the item?
Second. All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
All right.
And their service is at one PM on Saturday. Um, the Willel Neighborhood Association meeting is tonight at six PM at the Willel Public Library. As has been stated, Thomas Neighborhood Association meeting is tonight at six thirty at Great, Greater St. Stevens Baptist Church located at one fifteen First Street. Thomas. Cypico Philly Neighborhood Association meeting is Wednesday, August the sixth at five thirty at the Cypico Plant Community Room. North Birmingham Neighborhood Association meeting is Monday, August the eleventh at the North Birmingham Library, and that's at six PM. The next Public Safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, August the twelfth. One PM in the Council Chamber, please submit your agenda items by email no later than Wednesday, August the sixth, no later than twelve noon to Gregory dot Stanley at Birmingham AL dot gov, and a sheet, a sheet, a shunter dot cifas at Birmingham AL dot gov. As has been mentioned, I just want to just thank Counsel Smithman for partnering with me on Heal the Block, all of the partners, Commissioner Tyson, um, Restore, OAA, uh, the One Hood, um, it was just, it was just a great event, everybody came out, the kids were able to get book bags, and it was a, you know, a great event. Thank Jimmy Nix for, um, the, the food, just the partnership all across the board, so we're going to be looking to heal the block in your district real soon, so we will be coming, talking to you all about that as well. Also, finally, Mr. President, the Six Prep Communities Fund Day will be this Saturday at Howard Sanford Rec Center, and that's going to be from four PM to seven PM on this Saturday, August the ninth. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Counsel Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President, a few quick things. Uh, Apple Valley Neighborhood Meeting will take place tonight at six thirty PM, that is at the East Pensavale Rec Center. The Echo Highlands Neighborhood will meet this Thursday at seven PM. That meeting is still taking place via Zoom. The Roebuck Neighborhood Association will meet Monday at six thirty PM at the East Precinct. Uh, Spring Lake Neighborhood Association, uh, meeting will be canceled on Thursday, uh, but they are having a National Night Out event tonight at fourteen hundred Ware Boulevard, uh, from five thirty PM to seven thirty PM. As well as the East Precinct will also be having a National Night Out tonight from five thirty PM to eight PM. Uh, have one request, uh, for the administration, if we could get some help to, uh, convene a meeting with the gas company, um, concerning, there's a lot of, uh, I'm not sure what they're doing, they have a subcontractor that is cutting the streets, doing something to the gas lines, and they've got temporary patches in, but we do want to talk about what the permanent patches look like before they, uh, actually put those in, so, uh, I'll get it back to you.
All right, thank you, Counsel Woods. For District Five, we have a few neighborhood meetings this week. Um, if you live in Birmingham, you live in a neighborhood with elected leadership, uh, that has a meeting every month, um, encourage everyone to find out when and where their Neighborhood Association meets, um, and if you need information on that, feel free to contact the council office or, or my office, who will help you get to the right place. Uh, in District Five, Eastlake Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at the Household of Faith Church. Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association will meet at, also tonight at six thirty at the Avondale Library. Wahoma Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday at six PM at the Southern Museum of Flight. Next Monday, the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting will take place, um, please submit agenda items. The meeting will be here in the Council Chambers at two PM. Want to let, uh, nonprofits out there, uh, know that the Central Alabama Redevelopment Alliance has a new program called a Nonprofit Accelerator, where nonprofits will be given tools to enhance their reach, grow their impact, and apply for funding opportunities. Please visit www.caranow, that's C-A-R-A-N-O-W dot org, to complete the application. Business, the City of Birmingham, um, Finance Department is hosting a free informational workshop for businesses looking to become a vendor with the City of Birmingham. On Thursday, August seventh, the mayor included in this in his communications earlier, um, so, that if you want, if you're interested in having your business become a vendor with the City of Birmingham, there's a informational workshop on Thursday, August seventh, from four to seven PM at the Boutwell Auditorium. For additional information, please contact the Purchasing Division at two oh five two five four two two six five. Want to remind folks that the Magic City Expo is happening this coming Saturday, uh, at the BJCC South Hall from ten AM to seven PM. It's a free event where you can network, shop, and support local businesses. And, uh, as always, uh, encourage folks to check out our two farmers' markets, where there's the Eastlake Market that happens every Saturday at Eastlake UMC, and the Pepper Place Farmers Market that takes place every Saturday at Pepper Place. Thank you, that concludes the, the announcements. Mr. Speaker, we have, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Abbott.
I forgot something, and I promised a lady I would mention it. At the corner of Eleventh Place South and Sixteenth Avenue South, there's a little grocery store that's been there my whole life, and for some strange reason, tractor-trailer trucks pull up in front of the store and totally block the view of oncoming traffic. Now that we have people who just don't even stop at stop signs, they just drive through them, I saw three last night. That's dangerous for the tractor-trailer to park on a s- the street, I measured it, the street's twenty-seven feet wide, and it has parking on one side. So a tractor-trailer, and then the city put the s- traffic calming in the wrong place on Eleventh Place, they've never done anything about it, like put it where it was supposed to be, so that's mixed in with the tractor-trailer trucks. It's just a mess. What can the city do about tractor-trailer rigs parking with their rear ends in a crosswalk and blocking the view of oncoming traffic? Do we have a, do we have a way to deal with that?
Yes, ma'am, Madam, uh, Counselor Abbott, if you could send us, again, can you restate the address, but for both of those, we would send both BPD and our Code Enforcement teams out. So, if you could give me the address, and if they could let us know, like, preferably sometimes in real time, so that we can see them out there and then make certain that we cite the owners and get that taken care of.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, it's just changed hands, and maybe that has something to do with why it's such a problem. Maybe they don't know how to run the store or something, but it's at the corner of Eleventh Place South and Sixteenth Avenue South, and I tried to look up the address on online mapping, but it says the page can't be found, which is disturbing on our city's website for the online mapping page to be unable to be found, so. But this is a problem, I don't want anybody to get hurt, I, I drive through that intersection several times a day, and it really is scary when you pull out, you're not sure whether one of those people that doesn't stop at stop signs is hidden behind the big giant tractor-trailer rigs.
We'll have it investigated, we'll also have the beat-out team investigate the traffic calming matter that you referenced, too.
I'll be glad to show it to them. I'll meet them out there and show them where it was supposed to be put and where they put it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I forgot, we have our last, uh, D six Farmers Market this Saturday at one thirty to three o'clock at Memorial Park. We'll have line dancing by Desi, free hamburgers and hot dogs, uh, vouchers, and, um, a live chef demonstration as well, so come out and support, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. All right, now, Mr. Clark, we have a few people who signed up for our public speakers list.
Tony Robinson. Tony Robinson. Cynthia Turner.
Hello, as you approach the lectern, um, please remember to state your name and address, you'll have three minutes, and they'll be displayed on the screens behind us. Go ahead.
I have several addresses, I just give the street because there's several on that street that I have an issue with. It is Twenty-Six Ave, can you hear me? It's Twenty-Six Avenue North of Wasps. Um, I, you know, I've come here numerous times for the same thing, but they did come and do, cut the grass, but I've had some issues from my neighbors when they did come and cut the grass because, um, the, some kind of spray they sprayed, it went all over their garden, and I'm having issues, and they're calling me, like, what do I need to do? Um, I sent the email trying to find out from the public works, what was the spray that was sprayed, and, and the guy that, that was there, I asked him, he told me he was, he asked me my number, he said he was going to text it, and I told him, the guy said, like, I need to know what chemicals those were, because he said, I don't know if it's going to mess up my whole yard, or if it's going to mess up anything, and I said, well, let me find out. I, and I tried, called, messaged people, nobody responded, so I said, well, I'm off today, let me come find out. Um, one person said that it sprayed, and it was advised, it was, he gave me, the guy told me, like I said, the guy gave me his number, he told me he was on call, I talked, I messaged publicly at work, so I haven't heard a answer, and he said destroyed his garden, and the guy next door, he was saying that, he was, he couldn't talk to me, I guess because they came, they just talked to me, he said, though, that there was an issue that, the issue that I'm having is causing water to stand up on his side, and he said, well, if they fix my side, can they fix his side, too? And, only twenty-ninth, I did speak with Counselor Woods, he did advise me that they're coming out, and they will have someone, he was coming out, um, to my property with someone within two weeks. Hopefully, this is going to be resolved at that time, because it's, like I said, it's been a long time. Then y'all don't change council people since I've been dealing with this, so, yeah, hopefully this can be resolved. And I told them that I was coming down here and I wanted to keep my word, because I am neighborhood president also, so I wanted to make sure I kept my word and did explain it to them.
Chief?
So, Ms. Alicia Lumpkin is waiting outside, forgive us for the breakdown, then whatever you've had with DPW, we'll make sure we close that gap, so if you can see her, and then we'll make sure we get you updates on those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Tyrone Richardson.
Tyrone Richardson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, like I said, my name is Tyrone Richardson. I live in the Southeastlake area. I've been there for about thirty-two years, and, um, I've been calling three one one for at least four years for the same thing, about the easements, and they're not being cut or attended to at all. There was a time that it used to been cut, they'd come by and see it, and managed the city, they'd come by and see it, and let me know who's in charge of the easement, and I know it can't be the citizens of the neighborhood in charge of. in charge of making sure the easement is cut. Last thing I remember, the city is supposed to maintain their easement. That's a city problem, and I, when I called 3-1-1, three years, people come out. Public Works, well, we don't do that. That's not my department. I remember when Public Works were Public Works. It wasn't chomping to all the different, the different fashions, who does this, who does that, who don't do this, who don't do this. Well, if you come out and see what the problem is and tell me, we don't do this, well, tell the person in your apartment who does, does it. I'm pretty sure you know the person who does it. I'm pretty sure you come out and tell me, well, we don't do this, they do it. Okay, well, Public Works, call the person you know, one of your constituents who does it, pass the message on, and tell them, man, you got something out here that need to be cut. You need to call his supervisor, who's supposed to be doing it. But the problem is, nobody in Public Works talked to Public Works. Nobody talked to each other. I'm constantly coming down here with the same thing every time. Came to my neighborhood, and I think, I kept thinking it was Josh or whoever it was, brought me his map. He pulled off the internet. They're going to tell me what's what. I asked him, how long you been in this jo, in this job you doing? Four years. I'm going to tell you something, I've been in my neighborhood thirty-some years. Who know better, me or you? I know my neighborhood, you just started this. Got the map, it shows the easement. On his map, it showed nothing like that. I don't know where you printed off it, where you got it from. This the map I got from the county downstairs, had the address to ask me where I got my map from. Huh, a problem. It should be where you got your map from. How I get some you can't get. It's crazy. I don't understand this. Why I do this? Why, why we got suffering in my neighborhood and can't get that done because nobody want to do their job? Did nobody make you take the job?
Mr. Richardson? So, if I'm remembering correctly, you came to speak to us about this about two or three weeks ago?
And it ain't been done.
Okay.
Every time I called 3-1-1, three years, I called for speed com. You know what they did? I understand when a person tell you do something and don't, they do it, just to get you off their back. They brought the clicking thing down there that afternoon. My wife got working five o'clock and it's already gone. And who you fooling? You just did it for entertainment, so you did do this. Three hours putting down there?
Understood. Mr. Richardson, Chief Sparks, can we have a follow-up conversation for Mr. Richardson?
Yes, so, I do want to see whether the misalot is, because staff has reported that they have cleaned and cleared out the ditch in Mr. Richardson's home, that the right of way was, that the right of way was cut, leading to his property, and that they are doing the investigation around this, the speed calming, traffic calming, so I would like to see where the alot is. So, yes, we'll do the follow-up.
All right, thank you, Chief.
I got pictures. All he's saying is the same thing I've been saying. Everybody's seeing what they are doing, but I can tell you what they ain't doing. They're not doing, nobody make you take the job you took. The city not paying you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Appreciate it.
You show the pictures? Are the pictures after they clean? I will. I called in there, I said it already, said it there before. And I'm saying, I said it already did it multiple times. So, we hear again the same thing over and over again, and they know me. Everybody know me. I have no reason lie to nobody. Why would I be out here saying the same thing every other time, and it's not being done? Now, I got property law tells me that my map, I got people at property law say, well, they supposed to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Counsel Williams is going to help you follow up on this. All right.
Mr. President.
Counsel Moore?
Yeah, forgive me, if y'all would allow me, I did want to just acknowledge Mr. Willie Jenkins, right fast, not to necessarily come and speak, but I did see that my brother got a chance to get a brand-new smile, and so, I just wanted him to show that off to us, because he was excited about it, so.
Looking good, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, want to thank our officers on duty, Officer Square and Officer Campbell. Thank you guys for being with us. Our next item?
Second.
All right. As we mentioned, the second, and all in favor of adjournment? Aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Hey, 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 it's Counsel Woman Tate coming to you from Heal the Block, one community at a time. The objective of Heal the Block is bringing the resources to the community and bridge the gap, you know, between community, law enforcement, and so, I'm grateful for partners like One Hood, OAA, all of our partners that are here. It is so many people here on today, my camp, my partner, Counsel Woman, Woman Smitham.
So, Heal the Block, this is about community unity, healing, really just rubbing on the community right over schools first. I would like to thank my colleague, Counselate. She actually took this concept from Newark, New Jersey.
So, you're just having a rare people here offering these services to those who can't often come in traditional places like City Hall, so I feel very great, very grateful and proud, you know, to have launched this initiative into Birmingham. We offering resources, you know, to people, healing generational trauma, letting people know that it is hope, that is why we are here. I feel great, you know, this is what it's all about.
We're here at the Boutwell Auditorium for the Second Annual Get Fit While You Sit Program. Today, Commissioner Tyson has teamed up with all sorts of resources and vendors to make this a great event for our seniors. I'm so happy to partner with her for the D7 Get Fit While You Sit Program that's at Roosevelt City Rec, that's every Thursday at 9:30. We have another one, it's Friday at 10:30. When I walked in and saw the large number of people that were here this morning, I was so excited.
Oh, my God, I was mind-blown when I walked in here and saw. I had no doubt that we wouldn't see the level of participation that we see here today again, Commissioner Tyson. Thank Commissioner Tyson, great partner to do what we're doing.
It helps to promote health and wellness among our seniors. We know the more that we move, the more physical activity we have, it helps brain activity, also it helps your community, your wellness, and so, I'm just excited to see the number of people that are taking part in this program today, and hopefully it will continue throughout their lives.
I'm very excited to see them participate, so it's more to come.
Please come out.
We love you guys, we're crazy about you, and we just want you all to have a blessed, happy time today, and we'll see you next week. All right, thank you.
So, we're out at the Crossplex in Central Park Neighborhood on the western side of Birmingham, celebrating the 14th anniversary of this facility, and it's a citywide back-to-school Crossplex birthday bash, and this year, the Five Points West community joined in and combined it to make it their Community Fun Day. So, everybody's out from all over town, plus all of the Five Points West community neighborhoods.
This year, we are combining all the neighborhoods together, and we are celebrating with the 14th birthday of the Crossplex. There are six neighborhoods in our community. We are Bush Hills Neighborhood. We have Bellevue Heights, we have Ensign Highland, we have Fairview, and we have Green Acres, the five neighborhoods we just explained today. And I am the secretary of my neighborhood, which is Bush Hills Neighborhood.
Kids are having fun. District Eight was really proud to be able to sponsor the Kids Zone again this year, and so, children, it's a family-friendly event, everybody's having a big time.